This is Denny. This is Ellis. This is Jones.
Yeah.
Mr. Mansonelli, here. This is Powell.
Yeah.
Mr. Seesack. Mr. Tinsley, here. Mr. Armour.
Here. 2.01 is the approval of minutes. Motion to approve the minutes of the January 25th board meeting. And it's February 15th, special board meeting. Love this motion.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 2.02 is the invoice listing. Motion to approve the invoice listing from January through February of 2023. Love this motion.
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. 2.03 is the treasurer's report. Mr. Powell.
As of December 31st, 2022, Pendelco's balance was $46,438,895. During January 2023, local, state, federal revenues totaled $2,496,177. Disbursements were issued in the amount of $3,645,869. As of January 31st, 2023, Pendelco's current balance is $45,289,203. Do I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report for January 2023?
So moved.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. 2.04 is the budget transfer report. Motion to approve the budget transfer report from January through February of 2023. Love this motion.
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Number three is a student representative report to the board.
Hello, everyone. Lovely to see you all again. Seamus could not make it tonight as he was not feeling well, but he did seem to say hello to you all. The Sun Valley Choir had its annual decade show and it was quite the performance. The show was sold out, which was amazing, and all the performances were awesome. Choir worked very valiantly to get the show together in such a short amount of time. So it was awesome to see them sell the show after all their hard work. Seamus was in it, so he cannot share his part, but he did a very good job. The freshmen had their annual Frash Dance on Friday, February 3rd. They had a great turnout and the dance stuff went very well. The sophomores have announced that their field trip will be going to attend the Phillies game on Sunday, April 23rd. They will be selling tickets for that starting next Monday, February 27th, and be selling them throughout the 3rd of March. The juniors have started to make their payments and plan for their annual field trip to Busch Gardens and Kings Dominion for this year, and people are very excited. It was a very fun trip to go on last year, and I personally recommend going. The juniors will also be starting to sell their tickets for prom on Wednesday, March 1st, and their prom will be held at the Canyon Aquarium again. Payments are continuously being made for the seniors upcoming Disney trip in May, so the students attending, as well as their parents, should be checking up for updates for that throughout the month. Senior class officers and advisors have been starting to put together some of the plans for our prom, which will be Friday, March, sorry, May 12th, at the Lewis Hotel in Philadelphia. And tickets will most likely be sold around the end of April and early May. Winter sports are mostly finished and spring sports have started to practice and come together for meetings. Section 7 recertification forms are past due as of now, however, students will be able to turn them in until March 6th, and then after that, they will not be able to participate. Third marking period has officially started as of Monday, January 30th, and will be ending on Friday, March 31st, which is not too far away from now. As we are nearing the back end of the school year, students are constantly reminded to finish the school year and continue to work hard until summer starts. That goes for all the seniors with their senioritis as well. Students also made course selection requests for the school year within the last week. With help of the new improved course selection handbook that was released, freshmen through juniors made their request last week and everything seems to be going smoothly for that. And that is all I have for today. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, sweetie. Thank you, sweetie. Number four on tonight's agenda is DCIU report. Ms. Powell.
So I'm just actually sharing some good news about our senior, Nick Markowitz. Nick is an exemplary welding student, still working on second year curriculum. He completed in the Skills USA Propagation Competition last year, winning districts to purchase with eight in states. This year, Nick placed first in Skills USA Welding Competition and moving on to the state competition next month at the Pennsylvania College of Technology. Co-op is typically not available until the third year students. However, Nick has successfully gone on his own outside of school and started his own welding business, providing welding services for close contacts. Upon graduation, Nick plans to continue his education at Western Welding Academy and pursue a career in pipeline welding. Good luck, Nick.
Thank you.
Number five, superintendent, sport dark stock.
Thank you, Mr. Armour. Evening, everyone, again. Present for the floor. Like to mention to the board, I typically will do a recap of our study session. I only point this to point out this fact for the members of the audience tonight. Just so you're aware that our board will actually on a study session go through our entire agenda and talk about the topics that they vote on this evening. Last week, we held it at the Sun Valley Media Information Center. Want to thank Mr. Roscoe's for being terrific hosts. We will be taking the study session on the road again in April, and we'll be at Northland Middle School as well. During Mr. Roscoe's presentation, he shared some slides that I'd also like to share as well for those that weren't there. Sun Valley High School has really enjoyed a tremendous 22-23 school year. We've been really impressed with the work of our staff. We've been particularly impressed with the work of the students at the school. They started the year with the theme of "I belong here" and really promoting belonging at the high school. And that's what we want. We want all students who live in Ashton, in Brookhaven, in Parkside, to feel like they belong in our community school. Regardless of interest, regardless of culture, regardless of ethnicity, regardless of religion, everybody should feel like they belong in their school at Sun Valley. And that's what we've been promoting and focusing on individuals so that everyone can feel that they belong in their community school. We recognize that belonging is important with respect to attachment and making great friends, and that comes through participation in extracurriculars. So we've had a lot of focus on re-engaging our clubs and our after-school activities. Some of the Dance Line majorettes that we have now, Video Game Club, Black Student Union, Dungeons and Dragons Club, Ultimate Frisbee, those types of activities still continue. Because we know that this is the kind of things that will lead to memories for students and kind of add to the academic experience that they have at the school. Mr. Roscoe's came in and said to the staff, "We want to get back to just creating a winning culture." We want to revive Valley pride, and that's what he heard in interviews with students, was kind of like coming out of COVID. They wanted that kind of Valley pride to come back, and we've seen that. Really tremendous student attendance at events, even our basketball game last Friday night, you know, packed house of kids. Bringing home the hardware, doing well, maximizing participation and commitment. That creates the winning culture that goes into the classroom as well. You know, and we always say pictures, you know, tell a thousand words, right? There it is. And you just see these pictures. It's kind of high-level, great activity, smiles, outstanding performances that we're seeing across the board. They have to climate and culture initiatives that the staff have really bought into, ensuring that, you know, you have hall passes, hall suites for stored practices. So if students make a mistake, they learn from the mistake and they understand that there's accountability that's going to be implemented. But also, when you make a mistake, it impacts other people in negative ways. And how can you restore the relationship with people that you may have harmed? So they could do a great job of that. Data-driven interventions, a lot of accountability, and significantly increased communication with the staff. Increased school-wide events. We know school has to be fun, right? School has to be relevant. So we have, you know, great attendance at our college night, dances that are well-attended. Activities, students are performing on stage, and our teachers just jumping in and making pep rallies fun and activities fun. That's what we want, kids who want to come to school and know they can make connections with staff. Academic's the most important part, right? New course catalog, new course offering. The school is no longer in school improvement due to attendance issues. So they've exited ATS I and we're really proud of that. And they feel that their seniors are ready, right? Seniors were the kids, the group that missed a lot of time because of COVID. But that's been remediated, and they are ready to go out and be ready for life. Lot of staff turnover last summer as people moved around in the profession, got jobs closer to home. But he's very impressed with the talent that they were also able to add on the backside of things. Had a great little email came in to one of the teachers from one of our graduates who went to Penn and was talking about how well-prepared she is as a result of the class that she had at Sun Valley. And other students were coming over to her, asking her for some of the background and the feedback and materials that she had from her academics at Sun Valley. That's the focus. Advanced credit opportunities, AP and dual enrollment night. We had the advanced credit Zoom webinar. There's increased interest in the DCTS programs as well. Trauma-informed training we've provided for all of our staff and data-driven interventions. Training that we had for our staff just this past Friday, essential standards and common assessments. But we don't want to lose sight of the core work that we do. And it's all around essential standards and ensuring that we have common assessments in place, increasing student engagement, preparing students for Keystone exams. He also mentioned future plans. We want to add new courses so that they're relevant to students and they're relevant for their pathways in the future. We want to ensure that they have the ability to explore different careers. We want to continue to celebrate more success. We think there's great things happening in that building that can be told in a greater way and a grander way. And also more opportunities for real-life skill development. On tonight's agenda, we have a couple items that I'd like to just mention for the purposes of the audience who's here. The board will be voting on a refunding measure for our debt. Our financial analyst was out last week and had explained to the board that due to the board's proactive decisions to take higher-rate debt and essentially refinance it at lower rates, Pendelco taxpayers have saved $8 million. We have a parameters resolution tonight that will enable us to save anywhere between $270,000 and about $340,000 in future debt. And anytime we can do that, we want to take those steps to do it and to provide some relief for the taxpayers and the residents in this district. It's a lot of work by our financial analyst, by our bond counsel, by our solicitor, and by our business administrator, but it's the right thing to do. There's also a resolution for Pendelco to convert from offering a half-day kindergarten program to a full-day program. We spoke at length about that in previous school board meetings. I've provided a summary of the options that we have before us with respect to moving into a full-day delivery of kindergarten. Some districts to our neighboring sides do not offer full-day kindergarten, some do. We are in a place right now where we can satisfactorily offer full-day kindergarten without having to go out to referendum for a special taxing authority. We will be able to do this within our existing budget. And also, the agenda also includes a minor change. It talks a reference to a new school calendar. There is no impact on the student calendar. It's only on a 12-month work week during the winter break. And the previous calendar had us open on the 28th, offices open, and actually offices should be closed, so that we make a correction, but no impact to the student calendar or the instructional calendar. Want to let the board know, as a result of the webinar I participated in on the comprehensive plan from PDE, they indicated that now the plans are due October 31st, 2023. So what we're looking at is we'll use step one, quantitative data assessment of the inputs and the outputs that we have throughout the district, make an assessment on the quantitative data that we have. Then we'll go through surveys, qualitative feedback that'll go out to the community, strengths and needs determinations in May, establish our priorities late spring, early summer, work on those action plans during the summer, and plan approval ideally by late summer, early fall, well ahead of the due date that PDE has established. Reminder, our cyber academy always open for visitors. We are pleased that the total number of students in the external cyber charters has decreased by 23 students, and that's a noticeable drop. Students are coming back to our cyber program unhappy and, you know, sometimes just kind of a little bit disappointed with the cyber offerings by the cyber charter. So they're giving Pendelco Cyber Academy a shot, and they're pleased with it. We have 23 students have come back to us. That's a big saving, because remember, we pay. Our property tax owners pay for cyber charter tuition when students go to the cyber charters. And it could be anywhere from $15,000 to $32,000 per student. So we're pleased to always offer that ourselves. Pendelco Wellness, continued big initiative for us. We were really happy. We had the highest participation rate in all of Delaware County in the Maintain Don't Gain campaign. 24% participation rate in that December event. 124 Snoop Muggs funded the Delaware County Health Trust were given to our staff and three on Apple Watches. You see the pictures up there. So really happy to see that. Congratulations to them. The Safe Arrival Attendance Reporting System has gone off really without glitches. I want to compliment our administrators and Lisa Pomerini and all the parents as well, who helped get the information out so that parents could move and migrate over to the school messenger system and be able to report absences and report early dismissals much more easily than they were in the past. So we're very happy with how that migration has occurred. Black History Month is coming to an end soon. I wanted to point out that on February 28th, Sun Valley will have a special presentation. I call it special presentation because it was essentially authored by our own students. So rather than, you know, going out and paying $2,500 for someone to come in and do a one-and-done assembly, and they're in the building and they're out and check it off the box, our own students came to the administration and said, "We want to plan, we want to produce, and we want to perform for our peers." And they'll have an assembly and their own performances on February 28th, first period. So we're really pleased to see that. Bridges Math Program, solid year number two. I wanted to show you some of these pictures. You know, last year was a tough implementation year, a lot to ask of our staff to move to a new, more collaborative, more problem-solving model of teaching mathematics. Let me tell you, it's still hard in year two, but we're really very impressed with the effort that our elementary teachers have been putting in to implement this program with fidelity. I mean, you just see the learning that's happening. Can't make up this type of learning. It's not just sitting there with the worksheets, drill and kill. It's making it relevant to kids and ensuring that they're actually learning by doing. I just wanted the board to be aware, this was a heavy, heavy lift on the part of our teachers, and we have been really, really impressed with the amount of time and effort that they've had to put in to prepare these lessons. You know, all the manipulatives, you don't just take them out of the box. You know, it takes a lot of time to get these things ready for a good lesson, and I wanted to make sure the board was aware. Really happy to mention that Feed the Joy Foundation has donated $6,500 to help Pendelco families cover outstanding lunch balances. So we had Brittany Scharr from the foundation along with panel parent Danielle Fiorelli, who had heard about this program in another district, asked Feed the Joy to come in and do it in Pendelco. And we had $6,500 donated. The check went to the business office and that would be given to Chartwells to defray the cost and pay all the outstanding lunch balances that we may have right now for families that have had struggles paying for the outstanding lunch debt. We want to really thank the Feed the Joy Foundation for coordinating that and giving us that check. Northland Student Council participated in the Explore, Act, Tell campaign in Pennsylvania, sponsored by the foundation for the back on literacy and learning. And we want to congratulate them. They were second-place winners in this regional competition. Kevin Siegel, Jen Porter, the student council team did an incredible job with their Thanksgiving breakfast food drive. They received a winning grant, and that will be given to the Kensington Project to help food insecure individuals who are battling opioid addictions enable them to get the help and the support that they need. Want to point out, Parkside student Jamison Camp and Coburn student Tommy Gold were selected to present at the Pennsylvania Invention Convention last week. They shared their inventions for snow and car removal vehicle and also a grocery remover machine with a Sharp-Tech-like paddle. Another student attendees who were at that as well. Really impressed that they were selected and represented Pendelco quite proudly. This month, we had Sun Valley come back home for their home academic competition with the Franklin Federal Credit Unit. The federal credit unit sponsors the HIQ team, the league, and our HIQ team did a fantastic job with their home meet, beating Bonner Frendy and Penwood at that particular event. Also, we had State Senator John Kane, who was an attendance to come to wish our team and teams well. Was pleased to have it. It's a great day, and it was a great event to be held in our new auditorium up at Sun Valley. Congratulations to the eight resistance selected for PMEA music festivals this year. We also want to congratulate Avery, Seamus, Madison, and Samantha Young, who were selected for the PMEA Region Choir Festival and just participated this past weekend in West Chester. So the arts are very much alive in Pendelco. Speaking of that, March reminder that is musical season. The high school will have its show of Chicago Teen Edition, March 16th through 18th. And Little Man Ray Jr. will be held Friday and Saturday, March 3rd and 4th at Northland Middle School. Both of those groups have been doing an incredible job preparing for the shows, and as you know, they will be really spectacular performances if history is any indication. There will be a free performance for any of our resident seniors, individuals who would like to come out on Wednesday to see the show and the staff on Thursday. More information is on our website. And also, this period of time, once we have an end of the season, I typically will give the board a review on how our athletics did. Really happy to tell you, Bocce team just today placed second in their championship competition, so they will be going to the regional competition on March 7th. Congratulations to the second-place team and the entire Bocce program for their accomplishments this season. Indoor track, haven't heard a lot about them in some recent years, but this year, boy, they really busted out and did a phenomenal job. Floor-by-two-hundred team qualified for Pennsylvania media championships at Con-Jones, media champion of 60-meter dash. I think I had read that he may have run the fastest 60-meters indoors of Sun Valley history. I have to confirm that. Swim team, Elena Cummings and Cara D'Amico qualified for the district tournament. Cara will be swimming at the YMCAC, seeded first in the 53 and third in the 103. Swimming and dive team, great season. Wrestling team, fourth straight Chesmont Championship. They won Chesmont Invite, Governor Mifflin Tournament, Rage and Cage Tournament at Garnet Valley, the CBE Stools, Mike Maluski Memorial Duels Tournament, and the Dallington Duels Tournament. This weekend, the team embarks on their individual postseason. Top four qualifiers reach weight class, advance to the regionals. Really super incredible season for Sun Valley Wrestling Program. Boys' basketball ended with a tough loss in the first round of the playoffs before a really wonderful packed home crowd. JV, 18-3, fortunately finished 15 and 8, include winning 10 of their last 12 games. Girls' basketball team followed up their success. They went 10-12, missed the playoffs by literally a fraction of a point, and they were highlighted for overcoming significant injuries and exceeding expectations this year. And the competition cheer team found continued success. They won the competition and came in second in several others. So great start for the competition cheer team. Finally, let's close up with some wonderful images of a lot of the Eagle spirit activity that I saw throughout our district. Sat out coming to Super Bowl, we know it was probably the wrong defensive scheme, but going into it, I have to say, our kids and our staff did a really wonderful job. And Dr. Kaminkan and I get to show up at these events and we're just all struck. And I'm reminded, you know, it's staff that have to put in the time to set up these activities and get the kids ready and do the art that comes along with it and plan the activities, all for the sake of giving the experience for our students to be a really, really good one and a really fun one in our building. So hats off to them and our students for coming in and just, you know, getting behind the Eagles as best as they could. I know everybody was hoping for that two-hour delay the next day, but fortunately, you know, that would have been a difficult two hours to have to deal with what happened the night before. But we're hoping next year. We're hoping next year Eagles come back and try to win the Super Bowl after all.
Announcements from the public today. Department of Executive Session to discuss personnel litigation. Any comments by members of the board? I'm looking for information. Comments by members of the public for agenda items own? Please state your name, address, and...
Sure.
If you hit the top button or...
Hi, everyone. Sarah Weinberg, 3566, Edgewater, Landmark Haven. So I'm here to speak on agenda item number 10.12, full-day kindergarten resolution. And I'd like to organize my comments by number. My first number is four. It's the number of years I've been a resident of Brookhaven in Pendelco School District. My next number is 10. That's the number of years that I've held a teaching license and been employed as a teacher in the state of Pennsylvania, not in Pendelco. Two is the number of children that I have who will attend the Pendelco School District. 207 is the number of kindergarten standards in the Pennsylvania Learning Standards for Early Childhood adopted in 2016. And 155 minutes, two and a half hours, students receive in kindergarten every day is not nearly enough time to master them all. Standards such as identify the evidence and offer uses, and analyze, compare, create, and compose two- and three-dimensional shapes cannot fully be covered in the limited instructional time kindergarten currently offers. There's more numbers for you. Three out of four, or 75%, that is the number of Pendelco Elementary Schools who, according to the PDE School Report Card, saw total stagnation, so zero gain or losses in ELA and Math over the last two years. This is similar to the losses seen by Wallingford, Swarthmore, and Roestreem Media Elementary Schools, who also currently have half-day kindergarten. Those numbers are as follow. Two out of three, or 67% of the Wallingford, Swarthmore Elementary Schools lost progress in Math and ELA. Three out of four, or 75% of Roestreem Media Elementary's lost progress in Math and ELA. Seven out of seven, or 100% of the elementary schools in Chester Upland and Chichester School Districts saw growth in Math and ELA over the last two years. Both districts offer full-day kindergarten and have for years. Clearly, the students in these districts are reaping the benefits of increased instructional time. 6,270, that is the amount a family with two parents working out of the home would need to pay today's child for the privilege of sending their child to kindergarten in Pendelco School District this year. If you compare that with a $5,500 non-Frenchenor kindergarten tuition at Holy Family Regional Catholic School, it is no surprise that many families in Pendelco go private or move out when it comes to their kids' kindergarten. My last number is 2023. That's this year. That's the year that Pendelco should move into the new millennium and offer its students a chance to meet the demands of a 21st-century education by offering full-day kindergarten. Thank you.
So I didn't prepare anything like my friend Sarah did.
If you have the button on this microphone, and then just give us your name and address for the record.
Sure. It's Marielle Mancano, and I live at 3667 Edgewater Lane, Brookhaven.
And then if you could address the board.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I didn't prepare anything like my friend Sarah did, but I also have children. I have three children who are under the age of five, so none of them are attending kindergarten right now. So this last year has been pretty stressful trying to plan for the half-day kindergarten, to say the least. So it would really be helpful, at least for me, and I know a lot of families that I know that attend St. Pre School that my son does, to have that full-day kindergarten. Obviously, Sarah went into more detail that I'm not going to be going into, but I just wanted to share my opinion, and I agree with a lot of things that Sarah said, and that it would be really helpful for my family, as well as a lot of the other families that I know to have that. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Samantha Gabe. I live at 2209 Geddesburg Drive, Aston. I'm a Sun Valley graduate. I currently have a four-year-old who is turning five, who's going into kindergarten. I am a healthcare worker who currently works in the emergency department, 12-hour shifts. So I would love for my son to go to full-day kindergarten. I love Sarah's stats. My son is currently at Smart From the Start. That is in Chester Heights, right next to Garnet Valley. He's succeeding very well there. I would hate for him to go from full-day preschool to half-day kindergarten, back to full-day. I just feel like he would regress, and I feel like other students would regress as well. Thank you.
Page two. 10.01 goes to page three. Four and ends at the bottom of page five. References to Pendelco Budget 2022 through 2023. Act 93 Plan, PDESA agreement, PDSSPA agreement, PA Section, School Code, Section 1108D. It is administrative recommendation to approve all personnel items as presented. Love this motion.
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Tonight, we will have a consent agenda for items 10.03 through 10.18. 10.19 will be done separately. Does any member wish to have anything removed to vote on separately? Right, with that, I need a motion to approve 10.03 through 10.18. Please note that all, everything is subject to solicitor review.
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. 10.19 is board member appointment. Motion is to approve, to fill the vacancy in term of former school district... Motion is to approve, to fill the vacancy in term of former school district director Lisa Essler by appointing Pat Twizzler, school director, according to School Code Section 315, effective immediately. Do I have this motion?
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's on page two. Motion passes. Comments by members of the public?
Full-day kindergarten, here we come.
So with that, I will, comments by members of the board, I'd like to say that since I have joined the board nine years ago, it's been an objective to mine to get to this point in life. My children are now older, that's not the point. The point is that it will, it is beneficial, as we heard the statistics, for the children to not only get the educational part of it, to get the social, emotional, and just learning how to deal with everyday life before they get to first grade. I think we were well behind in that point where we had a lot of children coming in first grade that didn't even have preschool or kindergarten. Parents just couldn't figure it out how to get them to school, they couldn't afford the after-school care, so they just stayed with grandma, or whatever the case may be. So I know a lot of board members, we took a stab at it right the year I got on the board, four or five years ago. Enrollment's down, it allowed us to fit it in our budget, and there it is, will be happening. So any other comments by members of the board?
Just wanted the board to know, we've got a big package in the mail, came today from PASBA, said, "It's a pleasure to inform you that Eric Zepley has recently been granted his renewed status as a Pennsylvania-certified school business administrator for the period of the next four years, and has completed all professional requirements for certification, so with the right privileges and obligations awarded that 27th day of January, finally got here." Congratulations.
All right, next meeting's on March 15th with our study session here at the Service Center, and March 22nd, our business meeting, once again at the Service Center, 7:00. Motion for adjournment?
So moved.